Commence for the proceedings. Tonight is our normal council meeting held tonight, Sunday 28th of August 2023, commencing at five thirty here. Just thank you. If I may, I just do welcome to country, the Port County Council acknowledges and pays respect to the palliative act of the people as the traditional and original owners of Luton Beach and continue with the studies of this main architecture. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal elders past and present. All persons in attendance advised that it is council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be now available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be live streamed on council's YouTube channel. Attendances and apologies, we have councillors, thank you. We do have one apology from councillor Asis tonight. Thank you for attending from the staff here and our public gallery, welcome. Any declarations of interest tonight, item two?
Yes, mayor.
Councillor Martin.
Mayor, interested in item 5.6 and 6.1. Now I'll be leaving the room for both.
5.6 and, sorry, 6?
6.1.
6.1, thank you. Any other declarations of interest? Councillor Moore?
Yes, mayor, just 4.2. I do live within 100 metres of the question, property question, but I'll be staying in the room and it won't impact my ability to make a decision.
Thank you. Any further declarations tonight? Thank you. So we move on to item three. Procedural, so confirmation of minutes.
Aye, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Holst, I'm sorry, the second of course, councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Holst.
Nothing further, ma'am. Be in the procedural, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other further comments? No, councillor Holst, to the close, please.
Consider it closed.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried, thank you. 3.2, public question time. 3.2.1 is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. The recommendation is there, have a move, please.
So moved.
Thank you, councillor Vine.
Second.
Thank you. Councillor Vine?
Nothing further, mayor, it was all in the report.
Thank you, councillor Lewis.
Yes, mayor, the responses are there, there was it.
Thank you. Any further comments from councillors? No, councillor Vine, to the close, please.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried, thank you. 3.2.2 is questions on notice from the public. Recommendation is there? If I may have a move, please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. And the second of course.
Second.
Councillor Holst. Councillor Murphy?
Yes, ma'am, be in the procedural, we're there for everyone to see again.
Thank you. Councillor Holst.
Nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy, to the close, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? So carried, moving right along. 3.2.3 is questions without notice from the public. Would you have some attendances in the gallery tonight? Mr. Jane, welcome.
I guess, Jenny, 23 Watkinsong Street, Devonport. When is the council going to remove the item out in the foyer that says Queen is Queen of Australia? She's not, hasn't been for some time.
Thank you. Do you want to, could you have any information for you there, Mr. Jane?
Yes, through you, mayor. We're yet to be notified with the new print and information from about King Charles, that'll be provided. So we're under direction at this point to continue to display the previous line.
Under, under direction from whom?
Through the Federal Government Department, if I understand.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanting your information. Thank you. Any further questions from the gallery? Mr. Mills, welcome.
Delighted to be here, thank you. My name is Christopher Mills, 52 Carron Street. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have one question. The western boundary of my house borders a public open space which is maintained by this council. There are a number of gum trees close to this boundary. These trees are now some 16 metres high and it's reasonable to suggest that they need trimming and deadwooding. On the 11th of August and again on the 22nd of August, I handed into reception a very polite and respectful request for a risk assessment because of the height of these trees and the danger of falling limbs onto my house and other foreseeable dangers. There is, as I understand it, a council department responsible for the upkeep of parks and reserves. There has been no response to my letters whatsoever. Would it be possible for the general manager to consider my requests of the 11th and 22nd of August? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. I'm sorry that you haven't had a response, but the general manager, yes, we can take that on notice and get back to you.
Okay.
Immediately, thank you. Any other questions from the gallery? No, thank you very much for that. Item 3.3 is questions on notice from councillors. We have a recommendation there. Have a move, please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy? The second of course.
Second.
Councillor Holst, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
It's all there for everyone to see, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Holst?
Nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further comment? No. Councillor Murphy, to the close.
Consider it closed.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? So moved, thank you. We'll move on to 3.4, notice of the motion, go on nil. Item four is planning authority matters. I'll now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use, Payment and Approval Act 1993 for the consideration of agenda items 4.1, 4.2 and 4.3. So if we move to that, 4.1 is there. If I may, have a move or a recommendation, please.
So moved, second.
Councillor Moore and councillor Shane, thank you. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, I think that this is a great planning, I'm sorry, I've lost my words for a second. I think this is a great idea and a development, the fact to have two communal residents with five bedroom each and especially for women, older women, is a fantastic result for the city. We are very much wanting to increase our housing for people, especially people in difficult circumstances. So I fully support this motion.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I didn't mention it was from one item, it's Devonport for residential, communal residence, councilship.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I agree with councillor Moore's comments. I particularly congratulate the developer for providing what I understand will be long-term affordable housing for older single women. And I know that this complements existing facilities by the same developer in Latrobe and also Launceston. And I'm happy to take on board the planners' recommendation in relation to part one. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Martin?
Thank you, mayor. The item revolves around two issues in regards to lots and that's proposed variation for a wall longer than nine metres within 1.5 metres of a side boundary. Proposal is sections of a wall totaling 18.58 metres within a 200 millimetre setback on a northern barrier, northern boundary. Main issue here is the impact of the loss of sunlight and with the orientation of the lot shows that any overshadowing impact would not be detrimental to adjoining properties as in displayed by the diagram included in the report. I note there that there is no existing solar installations that will be impacted by this proposal. I might mention that because within this type of area of expertise, we can't make judgment on what existing solar insulation may be coming up or may not be in the future. So we can't make a judgment on that. The second issue was proposal requiring five car spaces per building, which means they needed 10, but is only providing five. But notice the council officers have said there's availability on street and accessibility to that type of parking. And of course, the site is close to public transport opportunities, 170 to 300 metres away. As to community representation, I feel that council officers have addressed concerns, especially through the inclusion of the requirement of a part five agreement to ensure occupancy of the residents does not exceed eight permanent residents per building. Therefore, I will be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, mayor. Congratulate councillor Martin on such a detailed response to the recommendation and is 100% correct.
Thank you. Councillor Holst?
Yes, I fully support this form of development. I think it's in the future that there's a version of bedsitters, which you have a bathroom and your kitchen and sort of thing all in the one room, close by anyway. I think this with our housing problems that we have at the moment, it's around Australia, I think this is something that's going to have to develop more and more, if we do get people into housing of some description instead of cars and tents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bilczynski?
Thank you, ma'am. I agree with everyone prior to being, crisis accommodation for women is very lean in our area. Have I got my mic on there? Is that what you're looking at?
Not sure, he's looking at me.
And so I think it's definite need of crisis accommodation here. And I think it's good that it's not permanent, temporary accommodation. So it's definitely needed.
Thank you. Further comment?
No. I'm not sure it's temporary, but it certainly will be available. I certainly think it's about time that we saw something that's aimed more at that demographic. Most of the phone calls I'm getting are about single older women, which believe, even from someone who's just moving from their own residence and trying to go to their build and have got nobody going between and they've sold their property. And there's just that transition period as well that can be a problem that we've got here as well. So I certainly think this is about time. I hope they get on with it very, very quickly. We don't want to see a holdup on these, so I'm really pleased to see it through tonight if it does and hopefully they can have that up and running soon as possible.
Thank you for everyone's comments. Councillor Moore, to the close, please.
And I just congratulate the developer, this development. I do take note of the three representations and I'm hoping that as the count, as the planners have reported, that it will be used for what it is stated to be built for. I have good faith in the developer that that's what the accommodation will be used for. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I will ask all those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? So carried unanimously. Thank you. 4.2, I'm a part of 4.2 is 171 Steel Street and 28 Don Road at Newport residing in general residential zone to commercial. Can I have a move, please?
So moved.
Councillor Martin and councillor Murphy? Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, mayor. Council has considered the points divided by applicant and I believe has probably addressed each point. Therefore, we'll be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. I agree with councillor Martin. The simple fact being is that the representation from the applicant did not address the amendment which was being sought and believe that the professional advice that we had in hand is appropriate.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I will just say it's ironic that Kerison's Corner, there's no offer there. Now we're getting another Kerison's Corner, I don't know what it'll be called. A lot of people commenting how ironic it is that we're finally getting what we had there before. So it'll be interesting. I hope it's a really successful business. Thank you. Councillor Martin, to the close.
Thank you, mayor. Just in your comments, Kerison's Corner has been there for years and has also been an eyesore for many, many years, as well as the need to fix up the soil contamination from years of leakage in that area. So at least the lots of land will be given another lease of vine. Consider the matter closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? So moved unanimously. Thank you. 4.3 is two touring places, two on subdivision. Mover of the recommendation, please.
So moved.
Councillor Vine?
Second.
Councillor Martin? Thank you. Councillor Vine?
Thank you, ma'am. Everything is as it seems in the report there, noting that it's an infill site. In that location, it's very close to a school and park. So hopefully the development will lead to a family finding a new home.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, mayor. The issue here is basically lot two as far as planning goes. It's a 430 square metre lot, which is 20 metres short of the required measurement. It has been assessed by officers and a small reduction in size still allows us to set that for a 10 metre by 15 metre building envelope. The second path is the 6.93 frontage, which is 5.07 metres short of the requirement. Currently, the frontage has been utilized as property access that's all, has provides room to maneuver on site. So that's been addressed as well. As to the representation, as council officers advise, any future dwelling proposal will be then compared to the requirements of the planning scheme upon application. So it's not relevant to the current application. Therefore, we'll be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Martin?
Thank you, mayor. I'll also be supporting the recommendation. I think this will be something that we will see a lot more of and we probably would encourage people to look at with respect to addressing the housing shortage facing this state. It is a good opportunity for utilization of land that, albeit in some people's eyes small, that is what some people are after and that is potentially what some people can afford. So I think there's a bit of a win-win here and hopefully it will be the catalyst to seeing a lot more of this type of opportunity having a council.
Yes, certainly agree. Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Vine, to the close, please.
Thank you, ma'am. As councillor Martin said, the lot is slightly marginally smaller than required, but with the fit development should be no problem based on the expertise report. So consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. We're moving on to section five of the report. 5.1 is the strategic plan 2009 to 2013. There is a recommendation there. We, the feedback was stated, if I could have a recommendation, move, sorry.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy? Councillor Martin, thank you very much. Councillor Murphy?
Mayor, I think it's, it's. Mayor, I think it's acknowledged that this particular document is something that is defining in shape in the council, but more importantly, defining shape in our municipality. And I think the feedback being so positive in that, realistically, there's nothing more for us to do but to adopt this plan. And I think the evidence is in, you know, the proof's in the pudding, and we're moving in the right direction. And I congratulate the general manager and the executive with respect to the compiling of this particular document, but more importantly, the direction in which they continue to steer us.
Thank you. You're welcome. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, mayor. Firstly, thank you to all that have provided feedback for the review of council's strategic plan 2009 to 2030. I certainly note the feedback regarding literacy rates locally, regionally and statewide. As we know through much research, babies, children, young people who gain literacy skills are enabled to make better decisions around their health and wellbeing, and more likely to gain well-paid employment and contribute to their community. Literacy should start from day one of a child's life, being read, read aloud to every day, setting them up for their educational journey and their rest of their lives. Whilst proud to say council adopted the live and learn strategy with the commitment for Devonport to become a learning community, and to increase quality of life and learning opportunities to improve and enrich Devonport's social, cultural, economic and environmental wellbeing. One of the objectives noted in that report is, or policy is 1.3, and that's to expand and further develop opportunities for the community to enhance literacy, literacy, social language and communication skills, which further encourage participation in programs to develop those skills as well as participate in lifelong learning. I mention that because I take this opportunity to promote council's the expo of everything, the celebration of lifelong learning at the Paranapalzina this Saturday, the 2nd of September, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and the entry is free. Finally, on a personal note, my wife and I, Suzanne, have been raising the plans for school breakfast clubs for 11 years. They'll provide nutritional meal for the students who have not had breakfast, and that's through the Toast for Kids Gala, and reading them for the day's learning, and we're proud to say that over 190,000 meals have been provided in that time. Additionally, the Devonport Readers' Cup is involved with literacy as well. It's now in its seventh year, encouraging children to read and enjoy what they read, and around 12 primary schools have been competing annually. I mentioned as well, as World Toast for Kids also have published a 100% Tasmanian children's book, Tasy Rhymes for Little Tigers by Norrell Joy. This is free to Tasmanian parents of Tasmanian babies with encouragement to read aloud every day. And the exciting part of that is that we also developed a companion version in Braille and Low Vision, which is the first in Australia. So the feedback about literacy is extremely important, but I see council over a period of time has been in that area and trying to do something positive with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly when I was reading that report, I thought that you, councillor Martin, would certainly be in favour of those comments coming through. And you certainly are a champion for that cause, and it's been great. And yes, the expo of everything is on this Saturday, so I'm hoping it really does show what was aimed to achieve there, and I think that we're getting a lot of feedback already, so I'm hoping it will be a very huge success. Thank you. Any further comments, please? Councillor Shane?
Yep. Like councillor Martin, I'm so impressed with the quality of feedback that the community gave. The level of detail and thought that they put into the strategic plan, like it's a sort of a bit of a dry document, I think I might have said that before once. But yeah, really humbled by the amount of thought, you know, we've got some great community people in our community that bring forward all those ideas. With indulgence, I'd just like to highlight a couple of things that I found interesting. One person commented that Earth had had its hottest week on modern record in early July. Where can I find council's on-ground activities towards equestrian carbon projects for this upcoming year? I'm assuming that might be covered in the climate change adaption plan, which is coming up. And there was just one more, so sorry, it's eight hundred pages of stuff, it's troubling with it. Yes, to the vegetation in areas, to the wildlife, including birds, snakes, frogs, et cetera, et cetera. What qualified people are examining the impact of vegetation changes on everything is a central part of council maintenance. I was just wondering if I could maybe find out at some date how that was resourced.
Thank you. Further comments? No. Councillor Murphy, close, please.
Yeah, thank you to my fellow councillors for their thoughts, and consider it closed, please.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Five point two is the Devonport City Council parking by law. The recommendation is there, if I can have a move, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Councillor Holster? And a second, please. Yes. Councillor Vine? Thank you. Councillor Holster?
The recommendation's there, it's sort of affixing the common seal to the Devonport City Council parking by law and number substance such, and it's subsequent certification by the general manager and a legal practitioner. Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councillor Vine?
Thank you, mayor. Pretty straightforward this one, I think. This was from me back in February, and there was no feedback from the community, which is probably a good sign for something like this, so fully endorse it.
Thank you. Any further comment? No. Councillor Holster, if you would mind closing the debate?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried unanimously. Five point three is a tender report to the annual recycling program, and the recommendation of those that ought to be awarded are there, if I can hear them clearly. So moved. Councillor Moore?
Second.
Councillor Murphy, sorry. Councillor Moore?
Yes, it's all in the report. I noticed that all the tenders were assessed against the selection criteria, and the two top points there has been granted to Harding's Hot Mix. I note that it is over our budgeted amount, but there is scope in the report to reduce the expenditure depending on the deterioration of roads over the winter.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, this is a good one. I think the residents of Buryville Avenue will be extremely happy with respect to a long awaited reseal of that particular avenue. And I agree with councillor Moore that, yes, it may be over budgeted, but however, that is the current economic climate they're in.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Shane?
Thanks, ma'am. Well, I'll ask how long Harding's have had the council contract?
Very good question. Councillor Holster said a long time.
It's true, mayor. We may come back to councillor Shane and the exact details, but certainly a contracting firm that have worked with council for a long time. Some years they pick up the reseal or the hot mix contracts, either one or both of those, and some years they've missed out on both. So it's been, let's say, my time at council, it's certainly had some of that work, but they haven't always won that contract.
Thank you very much. Just another quick question.
Sure. Thank you.
How long has the road maintenance been out forced to an external contractor? I believe we used to do it in-house.
It's true, mayor. Not where I know, always outsourced, sealing and all these.
I can, thank you very much.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Holster?
There's lots of roads here. Does this contract have anything to do with some of our parks and reserves walking tracks? Was that a separate contract?
Yeah, that's a separate contract. There is a tonnage rate there for hot mix that could be used for some of those types of projects. However, these roads are just the public roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Moore, if you're close, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Five point four is the tendered report contract for the Bayard Park site. Recommendation's there, if I can have a move, please.
So moved.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Thanks, councillor Moore. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, mayor. This has been ongoing for many, many years to play the sport and those who want to use the ground for recreation of the night time. Having lighting on the ground such as this now is had to happen, and especially when the Devonport Football Oval is inundated with wet weather, Bayard Park will be used as a secondary facility to allow those sports people to train upon. I do note that the capital budget has an allocation of $312, $3,000, and we've secured $263,000 from the state government through a planning field grant program. So it only requires council's contribution of $48,996 for that budget. But also note that there's a commander budget for about $19,000, so they're even better. So I think it's affordable.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Again, I agree with councillor Martin. The interesting point there being that any savings that we do find in this project will actually go towards the insurance forms in the delivery of the Bayard Park and Ennies block. So looking forward to that, because an extra 20 grand here or there is going to make a big difference to give us all and support the renovation.
Thank you. Any further comment? Yep. Councillor Holster, sorry.
It's good to see this part of it coming forward. I could probably go back to the days where the only light was at the Oval and the showground, so we've certainly got a lot of providing part of different community groups for their sporting facilities at night, and it's been beneficial to the health of the community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councillor Shane?
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick question regarding the contingency at 20%. I know the report states that's due to geotech issues. Is it a particularly rocky location?
Through you?
I know the excess, if not used, goes back into one of the pool, but I was just curious as to why the contingency? Assume geotech issues?
Yep, through you, mayor. Excuse me.
So with light towers, you've got extremely deep footings, and when you get down towards the sea, there you get strike, rock and all sorts of things, so, and there have been encounters, I suppose, in that area. So we are aware, but we need to do the geotech as part of the light tower footing design, so we'll just allow for that part of the risk.
Thank you very much. Further questions? Councillor? Vine?
Yeah, that's me. That's me, thinking.
I'm seeing if you'd actually move. Stop.
Just to reiterate, it's great that we're getting lighting in this area. I think it'd be much more better utilized, and I will make a note that I am sympathetic for any neighbours in that area that might be against it, but I think that the community improvement and the value outweighs that. And that it is a local company, has come under budget, was mentioned. I'm turning to correct councillor Martin. It was $263,004 from his startup.
I rounded it up.
Cheeky.
Thank you.
Very nice of you to correct. Five dollar? No problem at all. Any further comment? I will just say, reiterating what councillor Holster has said, how many people are we going to make very, very happy? We look outside right now and start at six o'clock at night. How many people are going to now be able to train further into the night when they need to and be safe? Lighting like that certainly makes the area a lot more safer at night as well. So it's certainly a no brainer. We've finally got round to it, and it's going to be a wonderful thing. So I certainly can't wait to see when the lights get turned on first time, we'll be really excited, but a lot of people down there. So thank you. So councillor Martin, to close, please.
Consider it, guys.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Five point five is Don Reserve Environmental Management Plan 23 through to 28.
So moved.
Thank you, councillor Holster.
Second.
Councillor Murphy? Councillor Holster, please.
This is to allow the management plan to go on display for the 30-day public consultation period. I think you've probably all seen the videos and that have been made of the wildlife and fauna out in the Don Reserve. I think it's fantastic. And I think the management plan is very important. I think in a lot of these areas, the Don Reserve and also the green built-up on Curso's tier, are probably very prone to fires, and we need to make sure that we maintain the fire protection in those areas. Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councillor, any further comments?
Thank you, mayor. Look, the Don Reserve is probably one of the, you know, significant assets for our community. It is widely used by, you know, a broad range of people within our community. It is an asset that I think has untapped potential. And I think this is going to, for me, this is going to be a topic of interest with respect to what type of feedback we get from the community around this particular plan, because I think it is so heavily used that we'll actually get a significant amount of interest. And the fact that the council goes about and how we go about that consultation process is something that I look forward to.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Vine?
Yeah, just a quick question, please, mayor. I noticed in the community engagement, we've got 185 responses. That seems like a great amount. Is that higher than average, would we say?
Mr. Scobie? Your turn.
Through you, mayor. That is a good response rate. So in comparison, our public open space strategy consultation process received well over 500 responses. So it's not the largest we've received, but certainly recognizes the community interest in the space and the broad range of user groups.
Yeah, I think that's just reiterating what councillor Murphy said. It's such a great space that's utilized by so many people. So I was going to say that's something that we're interested in how we manage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Martin, sorry.
I haven't. I will once. Do you?
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Yes, concur with the comments around the table from Matt Scobie in regards to, there's a lot of interest in regards to the area. But I just wanted to applaud the forum of the Don Reserve working group as part of the recommendations or guide the plan's implementation, which I think having that community involvement and making sure the plan is implemented is extremely important moving forward. Thank you.
Councillor Shane?
Yes. I have a question. Look up there probably three or four times a week. And yeah, congratulations to the working group that do so much volunteer work there. My question was, and it's going to sound like a loaded question, I don't want it to, but there's a quote in there saying that trees might be relocated, hollowed out trees might be moved into the Don Reserve from other sites for habitat. And my question was, would that be done in consultation with someone like Dave Gold, who has a, or a parks person? Because when I was on a, I'm trying to edit this, when I was on a trip with my son at Teagara, Dave was explaining that when you move just the tiniest little thing, if an animal's being chased in the dark, smashes into, like they get used to their habitat being extremely consistent and not changing. So when I was sort of seeing in this report, we might be moving things in, I was just wondering, is that going to be done with any consultation as to how it affects the habitat?
That's not good at all. We've seen it dark, but anyway.
No, I thought it was a thin apparently.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be actually, yes.
That's a motion. That's a wrong.
All good? Any further comments on the Don Reserve?
I will just comment that as a child, sorry, as a child, I was down there on a regular basis, up along the Lollicoats, I was always in that area. Think about where that was been and where it is now, and the information that we're getting out from people and the way that we do consult with the community and respect that reserve is just second to none. I've just been down there just recently, and I have to admit, I haven't been down here for a while. So, you know, obviously with the rich and the more access that it's got, plus the fact that it is one of our wonderful reserves on both sides of the river, we do a really remarkable job of looking after it. It's not easy, but the more people...
Then the more people go into an area, the more then there is more work to be done in trying to protect areas. So I think the staff do an amazing job and I can't wait to see what the community have to say as well. Sorry, Councillor Holster, did you have?
Question?
Yes, sorry.
Um, on the western side of the Don River on the Waverly Track, there's quite a lot of trees that have got blue crosses on them. I know some of them are dead. I believe they've been poisoned. Um, they're probably 100-year-old trees and I believe because they're radiator pines, they're not native. Some bright sparks decided to get rid of it. So we've got a policy somewhere that does involve that treatment.
Yeah, through you here. That's generally correct what Councillor Holster's saying. There's been some non-native trees within those reserves have been identified for removal. And I believe they've got, yeah, they've got blue crosses on them and they've been poisoned and they will be removed. And we have received some advice around taking action.
Thank you.
Thank you. You might leave your light on at the moment. Any further comments? No, so Councillor Holster to close, please.
I had another question, but it's gone. So consider it closed.
May I, I sense you have Councillor Holster. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? So very unanimously. So item 5.6 is the Access and Inclusion Working Group membership. We're just waiting for Councillor Martin to vacate. Thank you. Um, so we were sent in confidence the applicants. So if I could have someone make a move and recommendation for two individuals to be put up for the group?
So moved Gay Smith and Timothy Page.
Second.
Thank you. And so the second was, thanks, Councillor Murphy. Sorry, who was my second? I was writing down. Councillor Moore? Thank you. Councillor Murphy, if you could just.
I just wanted to bring it up there. Sorry. Um, I, I think the two names that I've suggested um, will make fantastic additions to that particular working group. And I'll heartily support their recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, this is a really important group within our city. I just want to thank people for putting themselves forward. It's really hard to put yourself forward knowing that you might not get onto a particular committee. But yeah, I would support Councillor Murphy's choice for both Gay Smith and Timothy Page.
Thank you. Any further comments? No, I simply agree with the two recommendations. And yes, it's lovely to see more people putting their hands up. It's a shame we don't have more vacancies. I would just apply out if anyone's listening in that have put their hands up to apply. Um, hold that thought. Um, perhaps there's sometimes there's changes that do happen. This group has had changes in the membership. So please don't feel that we're clear you off. If you would like to still be part of something, don't go too far. All good? Thank you. And if I could ask Councillor Murphy to close, please. Just a minute.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as I stated earlier, I think both Gay Smith and Timothy Page would be fantastic additions. It is worth noting that the, we already have a reasonable representation of advocacy groups on the committee now. And I think these two particular individuals will, as I said, make fantastic additions to that and consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Kerry Vannanosley, thank you very much. And we'll have Councillor Martin return. Moving on to 5.7, Headspace Consortium Membership. The recommendation is there for a representative, if I can have someone move and suggest the representative at the same time, please. Councillor Moore?
Sure.
Uh, second.
Representative?
Yeah, Jared Ennis.
Councillor Ennis? Our second to place?
Uh, yes, Mayor.
Councillor Viner?
Thank you.
Councillor Moore?
Yeah, this is really exciting. If Councillor Jared Ennis hadn't put his hand up, I definitely would have for this one. Um, but to be in collaboration with Headspace, which is a really important service in our community is exciting for council and I wish Councillor Ennis the best on the committee.
Thank you. Uh, Councillor Viner?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councillor Moore there and think that Councillor Ennis will do a great job. He's already working in that space. He's got a massive background of working with young children in the community. So I think he'd be great for that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment?
Councillor Cheeky? Um, yeah, we've got a number of councillors around the table that have got a lot of experience with community work and helping youth in our community. Um, but I would like to congratulate Councillor Ennis for putting his hand up. He would be fantastic. Very hard-looking advocate for great, so congratulations, Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. Um, any further comment? No, I just have a question, if I may, for this. Can we have a proxy? I just think because there's such an interesting amount of councillors, I think it would be nice to have that option. Would that be allowed? Can I ask the mover and second mover if they're happy for a proxy should be suggested?
Do you have someone in mind?
Yeah, Councillor Moore.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Oh, certainly.
I just think it would be nice. Sometimes we've done that before and it's just been handy. Sometimes our councillors can't always make every meeting. I think it's nice to have that backup or perhaps someone to just, you know, talk to as well and speak about it as well. So that would be nice. So Councillor Moore, if you would be willing to accept that nomination?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, do I need to do them as a segment? We've gone, did you talk that through? Thank you. Um, and we'll ask Councillor Moore to close.
I walked into that one. You two, consider it closed. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, and against? Kerry Vannanosley, thank you very much for that. That would be great to see. Uh, 5.8 is Mersey Ferry's Eastern pontoon and ferry service. There are two recommendations there. If we have a move. So move which option?
Two.
Councillor Cheeky?
However.
Sorry.
Um.
So that was option two?
Option two, Mayor.
Right.
Um. I'd like to make a amendment to that motion.
Okay. What are you suggesting?
So my concern regarding the motion, the recommendation as written is, is it's often ended and I think we need a resolution to this matter. Um, I'd like to propose the wording in option two, A, Kedge, proprietary limited enter into an agreement with council prior to December 2023. Are you happy with that wording?
Just rushing to, maybe even?
I'm happy to take suggestions on term wording, but the intention is that we need we need to resolve this on my.
A date?
A date. Well, the first news, I would suggest maybe even 20th. Most businesses close by that point.
It's a December?
Yep.
2023?
Yep.
And in hand into, into into the category five?
Yeah, I believe so much work has already been done on this matter. It's not like it's something that couldn't be sorted within a couple of months if indeed it is going to be.
What's interesting, because that says B, the minus is A?
In option.
Yeah, in sign.
Yeah, I saw it. Yeah, it's J. Okay, so that's why I was looking in the wrong spot. That's right. So we've got them saying, yeah, on top of that. Our second to place?
Second.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you.
Councillor Cheeky to speak to that.
Go, I think I've covered the same points. I've long been a fan of the ferry, but it has a lot of sentimental attachment for many. However, with a business hat on, I do understand that it needs to be financially viable. And we need to some, need to cover some sort of, um, position with Kedge whereby we understand in writing what's being offered. And council needs to be comfortable that that's, that's its main parameters, what, what we've been charged to by the great hats. So that is basically the reason for my support. Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The Mersey Ferry service is a huge part, history of Devonport, especially when we look back talking army. Now I brought both sides of the Mersey together to eventually form the original city that we enjoy today. On the North West Coast. To lose a historic service such as this would be a tragic loss to our community and I say the North West Coast as well. And opportunities have been identified for the service over this period of time, which has been about a year. Uh, in regards to tourism, uh, regular tourism tours, tying with the location of the new hotel. Tasport's key link, the tourism spirit staff to enjoy. And I have to make note there, when the gate was closed off to the original Spirit of Tasmania Yard, uh, the crew were not able to access the Mersey Ferry, uh, which placed the ferry at economic risk. And by now we're able to include the other option of, uh, linking up with the key link. Uh, that certainly brings that economic plus to the fore. Um, so that's, that's a great thing and a great opportunity that we can investigate. If we don't do this and give the ferry an opportunity to prove itself, we miss that, uh, that, that opportunity to do that link. Especially when we start looking at Julie Burgess pontoon, the Mersey Yacht Club redevelopment, the proposed Fishman's Wharf, uh, and allow southern East Devonport residents to have access, as well as proposed school and tourism tours. And it also gives a reason for tourists to actually stay in Devonport and to further their stay. And yes, I would say it's being a bit entrepreneurial. It's a risk. Uh, but also the Basra Maritime Museum, Regional Art Gallery, Living City Project, including a connection. Uh, the Convexion Centre are all at risk. Uh, and the new hotel and even the Julie Burgess was a risk. But we went ahead with these things and look where we are now. And it's about having that vision of moving forward and and maintaining the history of what we have and being able to tell the stories. And the Mersey Ferry is very much part of the story of Devonport. Uh, as it all have been costing money, but some still doing so. Uh, and look, it'd be an asset to the community. We should buy option two with our best look forward to give every opportunity for the service to continue and enhance Devonport's offering, including connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Martin, further comment? Councillor Holster?
I think it's a good idea to put a date on this. Maybe it's the end of that time and it'll probably still be um, not really decided. I think eventually we've got to see a business plan and an operator. Um, if there's no such thing, it's going to be pretty difficult. But option two, I'll support at this stage. See what happens.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Murphy? Oh, sorry, I can't say all my comments up. Now I can. There it is. Sorry, did you want Councillor Wuchinski to speak before you?
Uh, yes, she was, trust me.
Sorry. Councillor Wuchinski, your chance.
Um, just making it a simple point without history or.
Oh, sorry.
I've turned it off. Sorry.
That's all right.
A simple point is that it's an opportunity for the community. And if we don't investigate it fully, then we haven't done our job as councillors. So I think we need to look at it as a total. We need to do further study on it. We need to find an operator and the operator needs to give a business plan. They won't give a business plan if we haven't got the pontoon because they've got nowhere to go. So it comes in twofold. I'll be doing option two, that supporting option two as, um, it, it's our job as councillors to do a total assessment of whether it will be right and if we can go ahead with it for the community. Thank you.
Okay, here, Councillor Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, if one comes any surprise, we'll not be supporting option two for a number of factors. Um, primarily the one is from the proponent who admits that they don't see the long-term viability in their proposal. That is the major concern that I have for the ratepayers to take on the element of risk. Uh, to speak to Councillor Wuchinski's point about, um, you know, having nowhere to go, that's a furthing. Uh, the fact being is that Kenedick are more than happy to gift the pontoon to whoever. And was actually part of the original proposal that was put by Kenedick to the council is that whoever took the ferry took the pontoon. However, Kedge in, in their entrepreneurial sense with respect to uh, them taking the opportunity to promote their private enterprise in the redevelopment of the ferry into a hydrogen-based operation. Um, again, um, without any commitment from Tasports to the storage of such said hydrogen. Um, it is too far away from what do we actually want. And Councillor Martin spoke this evening with respect to the history and I've been a big supporter of this ferry. Uh, even to the tune of being financially involved um, in the purchase of the western side of Pontoon, uh, to continue, to ensure that it continued. However, there is a difference between a tourism operation and the so-called, what are we actually looking to achieve? We, are we wanting a service that, that as it was, an on-demand service that went from one side of the river to the other to assist in moving people who didn't, did not necessarily have the capacity or the means to use public transport? I think the community has spoken with respect to the usage of the ferry by not supporting it, hence the reason why. And as, as outlined by the potential proponent, that this is not financially sustainable for them. We may enter into an agreement with Kedge by the 20th of December. But by the 20th of December next year, if it's costing them $100,000 a year, are they going to continue to do it? We need a long-term solution. We don't need a short-term fix. They don't offer that and they've known for a considerable period of time, because we've been talking about this for over 10 months and longer, um, they've known what they needed to provide council. Council needs a level of surety with respect to if we commit ratepayers' funds, there will be a service that will be ongoing. Um, and unfortunately, this operator is not willing to do that. We don't need to rush into a decision based on this is the first operator that's come along. I do agree with Councillor Martin, however, with respect to the opportunities that do exist uh, moving forward. And that is, that is 100% right. Once the key link service is up and is operational and the terminal for the Spirit of Tasmania is further south down the river, there is the potential for a particular service that could be utilized out of the Julian purchase pontoon. Um, however, uh, again, I don't think that the current vessel that Kedge is willing to take on uh, with, you know, half a million dollars' worth of retrofitting and the inclusion of disabled toilet. And I'm not too sure how much time many of us have spent. I know I've spent quite a lot of time on that ferry going backwards and forwards. Because you just take photos of the business from the other side of the river. So is that advantageous for me to do it? Um, there isn't a lot of space. It has a maximum capacity of 22 people, I think, from memory. Put a disabled toilet, that's going to be reduced significantly. So where's the value in actually having that? Um, you know, if we're wanting a water taxi or another service, we need to make sure it's, um, what are we actually wanting here on behalf of the ratepayers? Is it a service that is just going to take people from one side of the river to the other? Or is it a tourism adventure? Because that's a whole, that's a different kettle of fish. And that is a different conversation that we could have with different levels of government in attracting different types of funding to support that. As much as this is an emotive issue for a lot of members of our community and some around this table, we need to be pragmatic and we need to be practical. The end of the day, this is a significant, um, risk, financial exposure. The end of the day, this is a significant, um, risk, financial exposure to the ratepayers with no guarantee, none whatsoever, that we will have a service that will continue to do what the service has done for over 160 years. That is it plain and simple. Um, so hence the reason why I cannot support option two. Um, and I think the, the fact being is that once we do have some of these other things, uh, we see them coming to fruition in the future, um, there may be a private operator who will see the entrepreneurial opportunity and actually do something about it, but I don't think it's council's responsibility. And if that operator comes along in the future and puts something to council, then council can make the decision on it because there will be obviously a viable business plan, um, that they're willing to put their hard earned into, um, not an opportunity to drive their own business for their own purposes.
Thank you. Further comment?
Uh, question, question if you will, please. Now, ju- just for clarifications, council won't take ownership of the pontoon until an agreement has been met, and the agreement must be met by the 20th, have I interpreted that correctly?
Of December.
Yeah, 20th of December, yeah. Correct, okay. Um, and through you, Mayor, does council currently, um, provide funding for any other public transport infrastructure in the city? At all? Subsidized, in kind, at all?
Not through a council.
Not through a council, okay. Um, that was all.
Thank you. Any further comment, question?
Just to clarify, I made previous to the ferry, but not with sense that, yeah, ferry stock, all right? That is it.
Yes, yeah.
Um, I was always looking forward to seeing her this week. Do you mind, Councilor Martin, to apologize, please, go for it.
Yeah, just probably important to make my position known. Um, I do understand this is an emotive issue, and, um, Councilor Martin's questions on notice did, um, uh, did point out that this has been a drawn-out process. One of the advantages of being a drawn-out process for a new councillor is it's given me nine or 10 months to actually talk to the community about such issues. Um, we all remember the night where we sat at the forum and we were asked yes/no questions, and the ferry was one of those issues. Um, and as a councillor, I reserve the right to change my mind about an issue when I now feel much more informed and equipped. So just for public record, I did vote in support for the ferry, but tonight I can't support the motion. Um, I just don't think that there is the community outcry for this. I looked through the 71 community budget submissions, the ferry was not mentioned in there once. Um, the people that I've spoken to when I've asked them about the ferry, they've said, yes, they would love it. And then when you discuss the costs and the fact that we won't actually own the ferry, that we will only on the, um, own the pontoons, it becomes a very different matter. So it's for that reason that I can't support option two tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Martin. Further comment?
Um, as I said, um, earlier, I, I was interested to see how this would go tonight and how this would pan out. Again, because we've had time now as a, as a team of councillors to really look at all the information that's come and been. We value the fact that Kedge has approached us and, and were thinking about doing what they were going to do. However, there seems to still be a lack of information in my, in my book. Um, and I know that option two, and I think Councilor Shane bringing up an end date to this as well, um, and in there, uh, part A that's in front of me, not necessarily behind me, um, about entering into disagreement, whether we've got it open or not. On an operational schedule and for an acceptable term to the, to the satisfaction of council is my biggest concern. How long will this operate for if we say yes? How many days, how many hours? Is that going to be acceptable for us to put, um, I suppose, pressure on Kedge to say, well, we expect this, and then he can say, but I, I expect to do this because this is how I'm afforded. It's, it's, it's kind of like a, a cart before the horse situation here of how this is going to look. We know how the ferry ran, I was very highly involved with the previous owners and the previous ferry system, and it made no money. It ran in the red regardless of council's input and financial help, and, and even previous to when the state government was, was part of it as well. Um, I can remember the highest amount of people that used the ferry over a six-month period was about 180 people a week. And if you base that on a $5 ticket, it still doesn't make a lot of sense when it comes down to having to have at least three staff running it who are on a certain reward because they have to have a certain ticket to be able to operate that ferry across the water. Um, there are a lot of implications here. Council shouldn't be involved in transport, that's, that's the norm. It doesn't mean that we can't do that, that's why we're looking at this very seriously. But under all considerations and all aspects that we've been given from both Kedge, from outside, from the community, from the push that comes from certain people, um, I, I really don't feel that I would be helping with option two currently, I would be happy with option one. We will put it to the vote with anyone to ask any further questions? Yes, of course.
Just, uh, a couple of questions, uh, if I may, first. Uh, just clarifying that, uh, we accept option two, Kinetic, subject to Kedge entering into agreement, uh, et cetera, uh, an operational schedule accepted to the satisfaction of council. So that actually gives Kedge an opportunity to deal with council on moving forward. Uh, that's what, that's what really, I take it that, uh, an understanding that means. Subject to, and, uh, on an operational schedule accepted, acceptable terms of satisfaction of council, so it's not satisfactory to council. We don't go ahead, is that correct?
That's, that's how I read it, but I don't know if I can answer it again, of course.
No, that's, we, we all actually, if I may.
It's Councilor Martin's turn.
It says subject to.
Yes, understood.
And acceptable terms to the satisfaction of council. So if we don't like it, we can chuck it out. If we do like it, well, we can move forward. Is that what that means?
Absolutely.
Right. Thank you, that would have been my, thank you.
All right. Councilor?
Uh, Mayor, if I may ask a question?
Yes.
Hypothetically speaking, my question is, um, Kedge entered into an agreement with satisfactory terms for council, 12 months or six months or eight months into that agreement, decide they no, no longer wish to continue him, what have we got then?
A pontoon.
Councilor?
Another question, um, we talked about whether council was involved with public transport. Uh, does council own the western pontoon?
The what? At, at the moment?
Yeah. Do we own?
Yes.
So council owns the western pontoon, so we've had our finger in the game as far as supporting public transport.
That's possible, of course we do, absolutely.
Clarifying, uh, with a, with a question, all right?
Absolutely.
As to hypotheticals, I mean, if I walk out in the middle of the road tomorrow and I get run over by a bus. Thank you.
It's mine, Mayor.
Have you got a question, Council Murphy?
Uh, I, you'll do. Uh, Mayor, can you confirm or deny, um, as part of that process, um, when a, a group of, of business people in town, uh, came together to purchase that pontoon and gift it, did previous orderman Grant Goodwin state at that particular time, um, after having been part of that process himself, state to the community publicly in the advocate that is now up to the community, if they want to keep it, they need to use it? Was that correct, Mayor?
I think it was use it or lose it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Shane?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I think Council Murphy's made some really good points this evening, but I'll just reiterate that I feel, I'm confused as hell. Um, I have every confidence in the ability of the elected reps around this table, um, to be able to make a decision on this in council's best interest. And I think I'll support Councilor Wilczynski's, um, view of looking at this as we're simply doing our job. I, I know there's, um, a lot of frustration around the fact that we haven't been given a business proposal, um, by Kedge, but I think putting an end date on this will allow us to, um, follow proper processes as best as we can. I believe there's enough common sense around the table to be able to make decisions based on hypothetical scenarios or otherwise, that's what we get paid for. Um, and I think the date of December, we probably even need to address it in the November meeting, really. But anyway, um, I think it gives us a short window just to close this off nicely. Um, and I, um, urge my fellow councillors to make a motion, recommendation, that's all.
Thanks, Council Shane. Um, and I just will remind those that have been in this situation before, don't have nine councillors here tonight, we have eight. So, all those in favour?
Aye.
And against? I'll have a sharp case piece for? Councilor Wilczynski, Councilor Martin, Councilor Holster, or Councilor Shane? Against? Councilor Murphy? Councilor Martin, Councilor Moore, and Councilor Jarman. Much is lost. Do I have a move or option one at all?
So who?
Council Murphy? Uh, second to third?
Second.
Council LeBine? Council Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I take Councilor Shane's point, common sense needs to be applied in the decision-making process here. This does not mean that into the future, someone may turn around, um, and put a business case together and put a ferry on demand. The simple fact being is that that case is going to have to stack up. Uh, as much as the emotion of wanting to have something, um, unfortunately, the, the economic reality is, um, it's not supported by the community. Um, so option one puts this to bed and provides this council the opportunity to look at, um, other opportunities for the assets that it owns, uh, without exposing the ratepayers to any further, um, financial impacts.
Thank you, Council LeBine?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Without going into too much detail, there was one part of the report I wanted to read out of the way because I think it's quite poignant. So if in the future council determines that ownership of marine assets and pontoons are not the core management responsibility of council, it could be future difficulties gifting the marine assets to another party. In the case the assets cannot be gifted, there will be significant cost to the decommission and dispose of the pontoon assets than reasonably rest- and then to reasonably restore the fortune environment. And I think we've covered off many times before that the pontoons are not in an ideal spot to start with. So for that reason alone, I will support option one.
Thank you. Further comment? Council Wilczynski?
Uh, just going back to the fact that we're not doing our true diligence as councillors if we don't look at a whole business perspective on this. We own one side, we are gifted the second side, we maintain the one side already. Uh, I'm saddened the fact that we're not doing our job to the best of our ability, and I won't be, uh, supporting option one.
Thank you. Further comment, Councilor Martin?
Councilor Shane was there, I guess.
Sorry.
You're listening to me too much. I'll have to go on now.
Okay.
Um, just a quick comment, the word emotion's been used a bit tonight. I'd just like to note for the record that just because you're emotional about something, doesn't mean that you can't look at it through, um, a clear business lens and understand the commercial vibe of the business.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Martin?
Uh, thank you. I concur with, uh, Councilor Shane and Councilor Wilczynski in regards to their comments. Um, I just think that, uh, once this service is gone, to get something back again, up and running again, uh, the degree of difficulty increases vastly, and we fear of missing out on something that, uh, that's not only historic, uh, but also has that entrepreneurial opportunity with the development that's currently going on around the river. Now, I won't be supporting option one. Um, I don't know where this might end up, uh, going, but, you know, option two actually said, subject to, so we still have the opportunity of throwing the whole thing out. We're just giving it more time as being suggested. Given the opportunity of Kedge to enter an agreement with council, it's disappointing that we haven't taken up the opportunity, and at the end of, uh, the 20th of December, would have given us the opportunity to say, well, no, it doesn't, it's not at the scratch, we're out. We didn't take that, and I very much agree with Councilor Wilczynski, that, um, you know, we're not doing our job. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Further comment, Council Holster?
I said before that if someone comes along that wants to operate it, comes up with a business plan, we can look at it then, nothing further.
Thank you. Further comment?
Um, oh, I must admit, I can be quite emotional about this. Um, I was quite emotional when we heard that the ferry was coming off the water in the first instance. Um, there's been so much work over the last six, seven years with the ferry. Um, it's always been iconic having it on the water. Um, but it's not operational currently, it's not on the water. It's been sitting at the yacht club, eyeing dry for so many months. It's, it's not operational. Um, I haven't had any outcry from all the people in this group that I hang out with or do things with or we part with the community over there. I've never heard, not one person has taken my side and said, uh, Alison, we really need the ferry back on the water. I know there was a petition back in the day, I know that there was, um, people signing it again because it, it looks good to them, but if they don't know the facts and they don't have all the information in front of them, it's easy to sign a petition and go, yes, I want the ferry back on the water. It's so easy to do. But if you don't have all the facts in front of you, and I think we've just got to be responsible here, I would love to see something back on the water at some stage, 100%. It's got to be bright, style. It's perhaps not just going to be a ferry that runs between, like a taxi service. I think perhaps it will be something that goes up and down the river and offers a little bit more of a tourism, um, opportunity. I, I think there's plenty of options, but I just don't think that little ferry is viable anymore. Um, she's taken off the water by the, the English that owned the company at the time because it was in very, very, um, bad repair, bad state, had done as much maintenance as they put to keep it on the water and keep it safe. But at the end of the day, even cars have their life and, and get written off. And I'm sorry to say that this ferry is no longer viable to have on the water. Um, now, Kedge, it was exciting when Kedge came along and said, we, we're willing to look at it, and we were very open to that. We've spent a lot of time on this, we've had workshops, we've asked for more information from them. They haven't been really given, given enough to us to encourage us to be a bit more on the same page, and that's why we're getting to this point, the pointy end, right tonight. And it's a shame, it's come to this, but I certainly will be supporting option one, unfortunately. Um, I will ask for Councilor Murphy to answer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I think we need to be very clear, um, around this particular issue. There is nothing stopping from Kedge from doing what they say they're going to do. It is a choice on their behalf not to take the eastern side pontoon on. That's going to cost them nothing. It's not going to cost Kedge any that they don't want it. And they're saying is that if they, if, if, if they own that, that they can't then run the service. That doesn't make any sense to me. Um, what they are doing is divulging themselves of any risk, and I don't think that the community should take that risk on. Um, that is it plain and simple. There's nothing stopping Kedge from doing what they're saying that they're going to do. They can get that pontoon for free, not a cent, gifted, done. But then it's on them. So, um, I think that common sense must be applied, we must bring it to a head, and if into the future, there is an operator when the climate changes with respect to infrastructure within the river, and they may, an entrepreneur may come along and look at a service that may deliver a lot of things as previously as I mentioned. However, this is the most responsible thing for us to do as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask for the vote, please. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
I'll show hands for the option one. Councillor Murphy, councillor Holster, councillor Vining, councillor Moore, councillor Jarman. Against councillor Dolchinsky, councillor Martin and councillor Shane. Option one is voted for. Thank you. Move on to item 5.9, is the draft place and assets naming policy.
Certainly.
Councillor Martin and councillor Murphy, the second? Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. It's great to see that we've got this draft. Excuse me. Great to see that we've got this draft policy now. And it's more of a given to community consultation, especially with the opportunity for the formation of a place and asset naming committee, as was achieved, the name of a paranormal convention centre, et cetera. And I think it's a wonderful policy that outlines the opportunity that the devil has to make sure that our naming of assets goes through the correct process and involves the community all the way down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. I congratulate councillor Martin bringing this to the table. I think it's a well-rounded document that has been proposed. And again, thanking for bringing it to you because there are a number of scenarios that are presented for council where this actually needs to be applied. So, it just gives us a little bit of clarity, so, yeah.
Further comment, councillor Shane?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, this is one of the first policies our members, as new councillors, that we actually made a decision on. And it does, the function of this new naming means that greater emphasis is on input from the community when we name places. And I just think it's far more appropriate than the former commemorative seat policy. Fantastic work.
Thank you. Councillor Vining?
Yeah, just to reiterate the other speakers, mayor, that I do congratulate and thank councillor Martin for bringing this up in the November meeting and starting the ball rolling on this document because I think it's important and separate from the commemorative seat policy, as councillor Shane just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Martin to close?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carry unanimously. Thank you. 5.10 Corporate Climate Change Adaptation Plan, year five status. Recommendations there, if I can remember, please. Move councillor Shane. Thank you. And the second?
Certainly.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Shane?
Thank you, mayor. Just very quickly, I'll find my notes, but I note that the plan is going to be reviewed during 2023, 24. I would hope that during that review, we look at the, sorry, I did make a little note, but the, I think it's the green, City Flood Systems Urban Greening Strategy. I feel there might be some lessons learned for us in the review of our climate change adaptation plan. The essence of their strategy is to create more of a green canopy for various reasons in the city. And I know once everyone born in Devonport turns 50, they immediately get this urge to chop trees down. Oh, my family do that with their gardens. But we do need to revisit that a bit and create a bit of shade in our public areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. It'll go down the necessary process that it'll have to go down. It is worth noting that 18 out of the 24 actions over the five-year plan had been completed, which I think is a fairly good achievement in respect to the detail that's in the plan. One's still in progress and one's ongoing. Interestingly enough, it's, we don't have a climate change champion in council, we have a team. And I think that's important. So, the fact that it's not just left up to one person, we've actually got a hundred of the council offices involved who are actually championing this particular policy.
Thank you. Further comments? No, everyone? Can't see much, so councillor Martin?
Yes, I'll reiterate councillor Murphy's points at 18 out of 24. There's two more to start, of course. I would also be very interested in moving forward when we see the next climate change adaptation plan with the information and the scientific facts that we have going on now and the proof that there is climate change actually occurring here and throughout the rest of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? No? Yes, I think it's very sensible what we're doing and we seem to be improving all the time and the information that we're gathering and the research that we're doing. I agree with councillor Murphy. I kind of looked at, well, I want to show you, don't have a champion, but you're right. We seem to have everybody championing the cause and that's so important. So, we don't just need one person. And I think that it just needs to be mindful for everybody. And especially going through these different things that happen through the year, whether it affects us directly as a council or whether it affects councils around us. We are all involved regionally. So, and we find that that is always the case. So, thank you. If I could have councillor Shane to close this?
Thank you, mayor. Working in the property sector, I find that one of the best sources of information on climate change and risk to the economy is through the insurance sector. We've been doing all our Australia AGMs and policies have been going up 20% for the last couple of years. And that's because we pick up the events on mainland and they fly through the state policies. But even locally, it's been really informative to see which parts of our municipality the insurance guys will provide flood cover or will not provide flood cover. So, yeah, I really look forward to the report review in this coming year. And thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to ask all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carry unanimously. Thank you. 5.11 Environmental Strategy 2019 to 2024, year five status. The recommendation is there for all to see. If I can remember, please. That's all, Shane? Thank you. And the second?
Certainly.
That's all, Murphy. Thank you. Councillor Shane?
I feel I'm on a roll tonight with my weird and wonderful questions. I'll just close on a high. A lot of the feedback on the environmental strategy was that weeds, weed is something the community is concerned about. But also, if I may, replace that dog poo. Just wondering, with bags, those stations that we have, the dog bags around the city, are they on those sensors that you have the bins? Because often I know when I'm walking my dog, they'll be empty. Perhaps that's contributing to the problem or perhaps people are just too nice and can't buy them from the supermarket.
Mr Rivers, will I ask that question?
Yeah, for you, mayor. They're not currently on those sensors, but we can sort of look at adding that into the future smart city initiatives.
How the smart council?
Well, there was a considerable amount of feedback along those lines. So, maybe some solutions might be.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr Rivers. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. Very interesting report. I won't go over too much of it because it's too bits there for everyone to see. But interestingly enough, one that jumped out was that, and I think it's important and I think it's showing the progression of council. And that is environmental sustainability is a consideration in capital projects development for government and council reporting. And again, one of our strategic plans or one of our strategic actions and our plans is Becoming a Smart City and states that electricity reports can now be completed by a smart metering. So, it just demonstrates that we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Further comments? More councillor? Oh, sorry, councillor Martin.
Thank you, mayor. Look, it's a great report. It is very interesting. We know that our community is invested in our environment, as has been anticipation numbers that have turned up to community events and that. And I just wanted to give a big shout out to Brayden Joey Scars in anticipating the regent area, Brown Rhyperia, these zones. They've been doing it now for a long time, I believe. Especially other schools that are also involved with the arboretum and planting trees out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, same. Any further comments? Councillor Shane to close?
Consider it that close, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
And against? Carry unanimously. Thank you. 5.12 City and Devil's Stedford Society Partnership for Greening. The recommendation is there. If I could have a move, please?
So moved.
Councillor Moore?
Certainly.
Oh, councillor Martin? Bound to the wire. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, this is an exciting partnership. Stedford's a great opportunities for young people, all people probably, to perform, to gain confidence and to show their talents. As a city that we are, we are proud of our arts programme and we need to continually build our name. We're doing that with public art, with performing arts. But it's really important that we keep also inspiring and showing talents of our younger people in the city. So, I think our Stedford is fantastic. I'm really glad that Devonport City Council do have a longstanding partnership with Devonport Stedford.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Unfortunately, councillor Moore doesn't leave much to say after that. Inspiring young people to be involved in arts and performing arts, I think, is essential for our city. We have a reputation for doing that, a longstanding reputation for supporting the Devonport Stedford. I think that having that competition also enables us to compare where we are with our arts and performing arts in regards to other municipalities and competition with young people, et cetera. But also opens up doorways to further their careers in that type of line of entertainment. And I think fostering that would certainly, well, it says a lot about our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment, councillor Murphy? Councillor Murphy?
I think she's going to say.
Be me, mayor.
Can't see more.
Mayor, I'd like to go first.
Councillor Murphy?
Thanks, mayor. It is, it's pleasing to see that this agenda, again, at the end of another successful Stedford. It's really interesting when you actually talk to some accommodation operators in town, the fact that there's very good available at this particular time of year. It's well patronised, this event, and it is something that we should always continue to actually support. You know, the amount of people that I've had conversations with over the weekend and people are known who've travelled from interstate to participate. And this is actually now features very highly on their calendar is to come to Devonport, Tasmania to participate in this Stedford. So, credit to the organisers, but more importantly, it just demonstrates that our council is willing to support the arts, as it has done in being a regional leader.
Thank you. Councillor Shane?
Regional leader indeed. I still remember forming a new Stedford when I was in grade six and I've had many years subsequently watching my son performing in school as Stedford. Community has a lot of affection for this Stedford and I'd just like to thank the organisers. They have invited all councillors to a performance on the 7th of September to sample a little bit of what they do. And they've long accepted invitation.
Thank you, councillor Vining?
Thank you, mayor. A couple of sequels off of this. Firstly, it's great that the council can continue to support the performing arts, especially young people in the city, as the other councillors have mentioned. I picked up that we're approaching the 100th year of the Devonport Stedford competition, which would be a great milestone to reach. And recently, over the last month, I've been to both the Don College Performance and also the Severnshaw one a couple of weekends ago. They were both brilliant. The only thing that can make those experiences better for the audience is when we get those new chairs installed, which will happen towards the back end of the year. So, looking forward to that and spending more time in the town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holster?
It's going back to the.
Can you put your microphone a little bit closer to you, if you don't? Anything?
It's going back to the 60s, actually. I actually remember quite a lot of people staying at the Fourby Hotel when I was a kid.
Oh.
I managed to stay there to go to the Stedford. So, it's certainly a benefit with accommodation from the city. And very well supported.
Thank you. Did you hear all of us? I can't see. There you go. So, councillor Dolchinsky?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I'll support everyone who's, like, the Stedford is a part of Devonport. I can remember tap dancing at the Stedford. And my son with his poetry and speaking. So, it's a great place for people just to get an experience of stage. Great for the schools, great for individuals. And we should definitely continue to support Devonport Stedford, for sure.
Thank you. Further comments? It was lovely enough to open it up the other night and speak at it. And I've been on that stage since the 84th, so it's a long time ago. And it's beautiful to see, 94th year. So, in five years' time, I mean, I can remember being at the 50th. And I never thought that that gets to 100 years. So, that's bizarre. So, to see that in five years' time, they're going to achieve their 100th year. And I can remember people like Alan Scotch and all the different people on those committees that ran it, all the volunteers, it wouldn't exist without those amazing people. Their legacy has really continued, it's so lovely to see. So, it's a partnership agreement that I think we're all very, very proud of and nice to see it continuing. And well done to the new committee that are there. We've got a new president, new group that are doing things there and they're having a go and it's really great to see. And brilliant for the kids. So, well done to everybody. I will ask councillor Moore to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Voted for unanimously. We're up to section six information. 6.1 is workshops, briefing sessions. We're asking councillor, waiting for councillor Martin to leave the room. Thank you.
So moved, mayor.
6.1, you're starting over. Councillor Vining? Second is councillor Murphy. Councillor Moore?
Thank you, mayor. Just the one workshop there and I did get a lot out of the youth family Community Connections introduction because even though I've lived here for so long, you know, knew it was there, but didn't know the great work that they were doing. So, I need to pop in and introduce myself at some time. Thank you.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Councillor Lee?
Yes, mayor. I think we discussed with those workshops, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councillor Vining, you to close then?
Consider it closed, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
And against? Carry unanimously. Councillor Martin will now be changed. And we'll move on to 6.2. Please, one for the report, if I can have a move, please.
I'm in.
Councillor Shane and councillor Holster, we're willing to do a second to the motion. Councillor Holster. Councillor Shane?
Thank you, mayor. Every month I keep scrolling through this list. Is it getting bigger each month? There's a lot there.
Oh, God.
Seems to be. Look after your health. I have a question just in relation to Geelong. That municipality you explained to us is about 380,000?
368,000.
68,000, yeah. Do you feel, I mean, that's almost 2/3 of Tasmania as well. Did you get the sense going over that study tour that that size of municipality was confidently managed by the council? That they sort of were resourced in a way that you felt worked for that size? I just sort of can't get my head around that many people. I mean, I know I lived in Sydney for a long time, but it's a huge amount of people. And the size of the council must have been enormous.
When you say that, it's very true. When I was speaking to the mayor at lunchtime, I just said, how many staff do you have? 3,000. And we can stitch on 368,000, watch your budget, it's huge. I said, how do you get your head around it all? It's also a different kettle of fish because obviously they're doing this for quite a while. And they're called the greatest at Geelong for a reason. But he did say it's not necessarily the fact that people aren't feeling represented, that's not the case. But also these, the mayor spoke about his councillors in very much favourable terms on the, what they bring to the table and the, the way that they really work. Well, that's not a portfolio, often the word being used, but they have strengths and areas and different facets that they concentrate on and work really well together and bring that to the table as well. So it's a completely different ball game when you've got a council that size. You don't necessarily have people that have been on our previous council before, probably would move it and put their hand up. So it, it, it's a different ball game. But yes, they do it very, very well. Yes, they have criticisms. Yes, they have a lot of no sales. Yes, they have issues, whether it's environmental or, or the like. But it was just fascinating to, to certainly say such a big council who respected the size of our council totally. They never questioned us about our size or, or why we aren't something else. But they certainly were aware of it when we all began reforming at the time and they did encourage that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any further questions yourself? Council Shane? Thank you. Council Holster?
Just a couple of questions. Central Coast Council, would you get any impression they're in favour of reforms for local government?
Yes, they certainly speak about it. It was just nice for us to do now catch up now they've got a new general manager. So it was on that basis that we decided to meet with them because we did meet with them about reform with the previous general manager. So we wanted to kind of get an idea now how that looks, which is slightly different. So it was just really for us to update ourselves with how the new general manager is going to be doing about that as well.
And the meeting of the code management about the walking track?
Code?
For code. Codes?
Of code. Sorry. Oh, thank you. Sorry. Can you send that off if you can, code? The code, I met with Kim and Bruce Robinson. I'm just talking about the coastal pathway. And they had a few concerns about how it looked on the Bayview Road section. That was outside where they have their business. And they were very good at just bringing up and monitoring a few things for me to take back to the staff that are working on that. And it's still a, a work in progress.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Council M?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up from the Council Holsters question with respect to the meeting with the Central Coast. Interestingly enough, the general manager made a pretty clear advocate, what he thought about government reform and his stand on that. So I'm not holding my breath there. Just another quick one. You met with the mayor and the CEO of Geelong City Council? Do they have a general manager or a CEO?
A CEO.
Yes, three days ago. We didn't make that person name a question. A new CEO started on last week.
Oh, so you're going with the outgoing?
With a member of their executive staff.
Oh, I'm not that excited.
Yes.
I do have CEO against.
And with respect to... We met with, let me find it here.
Lots of people.
Yeah, you did. It sort of takes a little while to go from one place to the other.
Sorry.
The roundtable discussions discuss housing and homelessness with the Crown Coastal Authority. Is there anything you can provide us with respect to those conversations? And the fact that we're still moving relatively slowly with the regional residential land use strategy?
Well, we didn't really discuss that as such. It was more listening to Julie Collins MP, our minister of the housing. She came along to the Crown Coastal Authority. That's the one you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about roundtable discussions to discuss.
Yes, Crown Coastal Authority.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry. That was some, yeah, so Minister Collins was there.
You might have forgotten to say that, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, explaining, that's why, it was brought to us with Senator Urquhart.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So it probably doesn't explain itself very well there. I do apologise. But we, she mentioned the Crown Coastal Authority on the basis that Senator Urquhart brought Julie Collins here and so we met with them and they spoke about it. So we're really getting an, an update really from the federal minister. So it wasn't really talking about that, those subjects as such. It was more getting an idea about funding and how that all works and how she was going about that.
So is that the roundtable discussions or is that the meeting that you had with Julie Collins?
Oh, is that true here? I do apologise.
Sorry, I'm just, yeah. It just says that you met with Julie Collins, we interviewed housing.
Thank you.
And Senator Anne Urquhart, but then another dot point down further. Just roundtable discussions to discuss housing and homelessness, Homelessness.
I can send anything.
Private Coastal Authority. So that's the reason for the question.
I might have to just get back to you on it. I want to find where it was and what it is. I won't be able to find that quick enough for you, but I can get back to you on that. No problem.
Yeah, it did interest because it is an area of obvious interest and has been for a long period of time.
I do apologise. Thank you. Further questions? If I could have, Council Shane, close please.
Consider them that close. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? So carried. Thank you. Six point three is the general manager's report. If I can have a move please?
So moved.
Council Murphy? And second place?
Second.
Council Holster, is that? Thank you. Council Murphy?
Yes, ma'am. I, I probably just have one question with respect to the mayor met with the editor of the Advocate. Sorry, the General Manager. And yourself met with the editor of the Advocate. It's just a general chit chat. Is he going to support local government reform? And he was like, I'll just keep doing what I do.
Through you, ma'am. The meeting with, with the editor was really a... Apparently I'd never met with Anthony, so an opportunity to, to connect. And we just talked about the general local issues, certainly about government reform is something that I think the Advocate have been, or the editor in particular, has been, hasn't been shy in saying that he supports reform. If I follow his editorials, that view's come through pretty strongly. So certainly we'll discuss that in some later.
And the second one there, you met with the owners of Frankie J's regarding a number of issues they wish to raise with councils. That's something that we'll be coming to a workshop so the rest of the councillors are informed of what those issues are.
High threat, you made operational things around storage, fencing, discussed noise, nothing to make of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? I'm sorry.
And that wasn't resolved in the meeting.
Sorry. Council Holster, you seconded the motion. Lord Shane, thank you.
So I've got nothing to add, thanks.
Thank you. Council Lord Shane, speak to you.
Again, just asking how we're going with Home Hill with Anne and Ling with what we're doing in Home Hill and our working through with the partners with, with council. Was that just a general meeting or was there a specific topic?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. That was just a general meeting for, they just wanted to express their opinions on some of the things in the draft feasibility study that we're putting together. Matt, did you want to explain on it, on the feasibility study?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. So the next action for council is to engage further with National Trust in terms of the discovery of the report. They have been participating in the development of that report. But prior to bringing that back to council for workshop, we're really seeking final endorsement from them of, of the structure of the report and the content. And Anne has been participating in the working group process around the development of that report as well.
Thank you. Council Vining?
Thank you, ma'am. Through you, I was unable to go to the local government review board hearings that were here last Tuesday. Was, was there a good, was there representation from the community? Many people come along to those review hearings?
Through you, ma'am. No, there was two or three people that came in and out through the day.
Right.
Certainly the Presentations Committee, there were four councils in this reading were taken seriously. The mayors and general managers, in some cases the deputy mayors were present and each council had an hour and 15 minutes in discussion with the, with the panel. But yeah, from a public point of view, there certainly wasn't many there through the day. However, there was a session at night, I understand, I mean, I understand there was 30 people registered. That public session, that was the opportunity for members of the public to have their, have their say at board.
Was training as well.
Council Holster, do you have a question?
Yes. I'll be to both the mayor and the general manager. In your meeting with the premier recently, was there any further development on transport's losing of the slipway?
That's been put out to tender. That's the latest update with that. It's an expression of my personal, that's been put out.
Right.
So we might have that update from that. Yes. Thank you. Very important to have that. Further questions? Council Murphy, close please.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Okay, thank you. Six point four is the monthly operational report. Recommendation is there? If I can have a move please? Council Shane? Thank you.
Second.
Please, Council Murphy. Council Shane?
Thank you, ma'am. I just have a question. I, I really like looking at the data that's presented in the, the operational report. But I know when we flip over to the financial year, all that sort of historic data disappears. And I know in, if you scroll down as far as I'm, 2.4 general infrastructure, it reverts to a calendar year, so you've got six months of data to look at. It's not a major issue, but I wonder when we get to the beginning of the next financial year, could we provide some historic data, either year on year? I, I just find it really useful to take the pulse of the city when I'm looking at planning applications. And it's just one month on its own. It's not incredibly useful data unless I go back and look at previous minutes, which of course I could. But just put that in question.
So moved. Uh, Council Murphy?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, again, as Council Shane said, very detailed report. I tend to agree, noting that the number of planning applications was significantly less than last month's. Yeah, significantly less than the last month. Whether that's just the evidence of the current economic climate or just the cycle that they do run in because of the length of time for planning applications being 42 days and not 30. So they probably cross over a fair bit if I'm correct and if I'm wrong, Mrs Lawson.
Through you, ma'am. The comment that I was going to give to you, Council Murphy, is that June is traditionally a high month for accepting planning applications. So those figures are actually when council receives the application. And July is traditionally a lower month. It's similar to December and January. And I, I guess the, the thought behind that has always been that people are trying to get their application in before the end of the financial year or the end of the calendar year.
Yep. I suspect that. And the other thing that's worth noting is the Minecraft seating in the mall. How well that's been accepted by the community. It's, it's created a lot of conversation topics. When they were being installed, they were a bit uncertain as to how comfortable, how practical they were going to be. They had to wait for the end product, but certainly amongst the younger generations, it has created some interest.
Thank you. Further comments from the table? Look, Council, oh, sorry, Council on?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I'm not sure who, where this has been happened before, but the luminosity, the augmented reality pictures. Has that been on in the city before? Okay, so, and you can't say you've got to be across everything that goes on in the city. Maybe being on council, I should be, but the boys and I stumbled across that and I reckon we, we had a good two hours finding those out and, but it was so great. I'm not sure who to thank for it. I'm looking over here. Yeah, brilliant. Just a, a great little...
So, hello.
Marie.
Marie, yeah, so publicly, thanks Marie. I'm not sure if that was an idea that came to council or we went and saw it, but we'd hopefully do more of that sort of thing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, further comments? Oh, sorry, Council on?
Thank you. I go the Senator, Councilor Vining, in regards to the project, something across it. I actually went with Marie around a couple of them. I thought augmented reality is, you know, going to be part of the future of moving along. Even with other tourism opportunities that you see around the place. We had a scan, something at each spot and then it will pop up. So I think that's an important project that was undertaken that will actually provide a foundation moving forward. Just on Marie again, just want to congratulate Devonport Jazz. There's this post on 3,152 attending overall events. So congratulations to Marie and all her helpers, especially the event volunteers. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Council Moore?
Yeah, I, through you, ma'am, just have a question. We always get the top 10 Facebook posts in terms of audience reach. Do we pay for any boost advertising? The reason I ask is it's often a little bit random in terms of the, for example, the Jazz Festival only reached a third of what the Bass Strait Marine Centre 50th anniversary did. So I was just wondering, do we boost certain posts or does it just seem a tiny bit out of sync in terms of the amount of people reached?
Thank you. Question?
Through you, ma'am. We have paid for some advertising that's really out from time to time. However, it's not common practice and we share that surprise at times. The things that do get quicker with the reach and the interest in the community. Over the next few months, the comm side of council business is something I'd like to come back with a workshop and just be handed to present some of those findings on Facebook and what does, and to connect with the community and what doesn't. It is quite interesting what people are interested in. Now, a lot of that's not paid in jockey.
Thank you. Further comments?
Question?
Yes.
I've had a couple of requests for 2,000 pounds. I know there's one in the Rundere area, but there's none in Paisers Park, I don't know of, and I don't think there's any in the mall.
What was the question? Sorry, the first part you said?
2,000 pounds? I don't know if there's any plans for, further plans for any of those anyway?
Through you, ma'am. At this stage, do we have any additional ones? Certainly something to talk me through the budget process, makes you think about it.
And another one is the southern side of the special pool complex where all the painters have these, needs a bit of cash flowing off or something. The roof's a mess. And the old library site is probably the same. We want our facilities to look good. It doesn't look good, but it's full of mould and so forth. So, thank you.
So moved. Council Holster, thank you. Further comments? Council Shane, close please.
Yes, just sort of quickly noted that the survey of Devonport Jazz indicated most people would come back again. That's great. Sometimes it has a, a difficult time of renewal. And also finally, just a welcome to council's new interim officer, Dermot Cross. Such an important role. Wish you all the best. Consider them that close. Thanks.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, on to the class session with the recommendation to move to close. Council Moore? Council Moore? Council Vining?
It's merely procedural. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for the public gallery. If I could have a moment in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. We'll move into class session. Thank you very much. Chair, your body?